About the beginning now. Welcome to the meeting of Independence School District 271 Bloomington Public Schools. Today is Monday, June 8, 2020. It is 7:00 PM. The school board meeting tonight is being conducted via Hangout Meet. It is being livestreamed by BECTV and will be replayed for the usual BECTV replay schedule. There is no public recognition tonight during this Hangout's meeting. However, if you wish to contact the school board, please send an email to schoolboard@ISD271.org. I am going to do roll call now for board members attendance. So please indicate if you are present. Director Bibi.
I see her.
Here.
Director Tom Bennett.
Here.
Director Olson.
Here.
Director Sorum.
Here.
Director Starks.
I'm here.
Director Stegaf.
Here.
And Nellie Corman is present, so all board members are present tonight. And before we start with approval of agenda, I just would like to say a few words in regards to the sad news that we heard today of the passing of one of our board member colleagues, school board member Marnie Shawn from St. Paul School District, who unfortunately died of complications of COVID-19 yesterday at the age of 31. She was a colleague and she was a friend and she was also part of the Minnesota School Board Directors of Color. She was a strong advocate of public education. She worked really hard in her community. She was part of the Mon community. She was also not only a school board member, but was also an administrator for Minneapolis Public Schools. And she did an amazing job during a very short amount of time. So on behalf of the Bloomington School Board, I would like to extend my condolences to Chair Shawn's family, the St. Paul School Board, the superintendent, and the entire St. Paul community. It's a big loss and it is a big loss not only for her community and for Minneapolis, but for the entire state. So now I'd like to move approval of the agenda. I'd like to make a motion to approve that agenda. Is there a second?
Second, that Bibi.
Okay, thank you. Any comments in regards to the agenda today or questions? Okay, hearing none, we're gonna vote. All those in favor of approving the agenda tonight, please say aye. Director Bibi.
Aye.
Director Bennett.
Aye.
Director Olson.
Aye.
Director Sorum.
Aye.
Director Starks.
Aye.
Director Stegaf.
Aye.
And Corman, aye. Okay, agenda has been approved. Now, we're gonna move into Part A of the agenda, approval of Part A. Part A is board business and it includes minutes, personal actions, administrative, personnel, independent personnel, and classified personnel, and it also contains contracts and agreements. So will somebody like to move approval of that, Part A of the agenda, please?
Come on.
Second, Stegaf.
Thank you. All those in favor of approving Part A of the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Director Bibi.
Aye.
Okay, Director Bennett.
Aye.
Director Olson.
Aye.
And Director Sorum.
Aye.
Director Starks.
Aye.
And Director Stegaf.
Aye.
And Corman, aye. That Part A has been approved. So we're gonna move into Part B of our agenda. And first, we're gonna have a presentation on our curriculum review summary 2019-2020. And I would like to call Andy Kubas and Rachel Jens, curricular and instructor director.
Chair Corman, Superintendent Fujitaki, school board members, viewing public. It's our pleasure to be here tonight and bring some regular business to the school board. Part of the things that we get to do as we make our way through the school year, as we look at some curriculum and some review processes. With us tonight is Rachel Jens, who is our Director of Curriculum Instruction. She'll be doing the bulk of the presenting, sorry, and I'll be driving, trying to present the PowerPoint as we move forward. So we've got a presentation for you and then we'll look at our resolutions after the presentation. So I will attempt to present. That's not what I wanna do. Let's try that. Is that working?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we'll go forward from there. Over to you, Rachel.
Great, Andy. You can go ahead and advance the slide for me. Our purpose tonight is to update the school board on state mandated changes in academic standards as well as the curriculum review work that has occurred as a result of those changes during the 2019-20 school year. We'll start with a review of the existing curriculum. This review of existing curriculum typically follows the release of new or revised academic standards. As you know, Minnesota has state mandated academic standards in English Language Arts, Math, Science, Social Studies, Physical Education, and the Arts. Districts are charged with developing their own local standards for health, world languages, and career and technical education. Our process for reviewing existing curriculum follows the release of these new standards and our primary goal is to ensure that all of our courses in the subject area under review are aligned to statewide expectations for student achievement and career and college readiness. We have established a calendar for curriculum review that aligns to the release of revised state standards. Most of our reviews span two to three years, depending on the target date established during rulemaking by which districts are required to have the new standards in place and the extent of the changes to the standards. As you can see, this year, we spent our time reviewing the arts as well as our first year of science review and K-5 Health. Academic standards in the arts were revised by the state of Minnesota in 2018. The art standards do include benchmarks across several areas of the arts: music, visual arts, theater, dance, and media arts. It's important to know that per state statute, students in elementary and middle school are required to meet the standards in two of those art areas and high schools must offer at least three of them and require students to meet the standards in at least one of those areas. We initiated our curriculum review of the arts in 2018-19 to ensure that our arts programming is aligned to these newly revised standards and that the teachers who are providing instruction in the arts have a thorough understanding of the instructional shifts required by them. We will continue to fulfill state requirements by requiring visual arts and music at the elementary level and the middle school level and offering courses in visual arts, music, theater, and media arts at the high school level. We have completed our review of visual arts and music curriculum and we plan to implement those changes pending board approval during the following school year in 2020-21. We'll complete our review of media arts and theater arts curriculum in 2020-21 with changes to be implemented the following year. This timeline is aligned with current rulemaking documents which would require districts to have the new standards implemented in their courses beginning in the 2021-22 school year. We also completed our review of K-5 Health. Local standards for health for K-5 were last adopted in 2009-2010. An increased focus on making sure that we are addressing the social and emotional health needs of all students in addition to promoting physical health led us to initiate this review. All right, on the next slide, you'll see the key outcomes of the process. As part of our review, we work closely with teams of teachers to start with a research-based practice review. We develop a purpose statement for instruction that supports our district mission of preparing all of our learners to thrive in a rapidly changing world and that supports our vision of creating pathways to career and college success. The discipline-specific purpose statement articulates how instruct- ...of study. We have expanded our music offerings and plan to offer a general music exploration course in addition to the traditional ensembles for our middle school students for grades six, seven, and eight at all of the middle schools. We've aligned our choral offerings at both high schools and for visual arts. We've eliminated high school courses that focus on a single visual arts medium in lieu of classes that provide more of a survey of multiple visual arts media. In K-5 Health, some notable revisions again include learning outcomes aligned to the national health education standards. Those standards are endorsed by the CDC. We've also worked to integrate social, emotional learning competencies to create a curriculum focused on multiple dimensions of health: physical, social, and emotional. And we've moved the introduction of concepts related to human growth and development from fifth grade to fourth grade. I'll move on to new curriculum. So per Regulation 603, our team under the leadership of the Executive Director of Learning and Teaching also leads an annual process to develop new curriculum and new courses. This process ensures we're continually working to offer a robust selection of courses that support students' aspirations and interests in addition to preparing them for career and college success. We have aligned our new courses to four fields of interest or career clusters. So we have some new courses in science, technology, engineering, and construction that will be offered at our high schools next year. You can see those classes listed on this slide. These courses will be taught, the first four engineering courses will be taught by our CTE instructors and will fulfill elective and STEM graduation requirements. Most of our current engineering offerings are two trimester courses. These four courses will be one trimester introductory classes that will allow students to explore their interest in engineering as a potential career pathway. We will also be offering a calculus-based AP Physics course as well as a food chemistry course. Both of those courses will be taught by licensed science teachers and can be taken to fulfill graduation requirements for physics or chemistry. In our Health Sciences and Human Services cluster, we will have two new courses, both piloted at Kennedy High School. Educational Technology and Multicultural Education will be offered as concurrent enrollment courses with Normandale Community College and part of a pathway for students who are interested in potentially pursuing education as a career and they will fulfill elective credit requirements. And then finally, we have three new courses in our Business Management Entrepreneurship and Information Technology Cluster. AP Macroeconomics and AP Microeconomics will be piloted at both of our high schools. And then Computer Science Principles will fulfill a STEM requirement as well and will be piloted at Kennedy High School. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have at this time prior to the resolutions.
Okay, are there any questions? Director Bennett?
Yes, thank you, Director Jens and Executive Director Kubas for all your work on this. I'm on our Director Jens, since we have two new school board members. If you could kind of maybe give more information about the process of who's on the curriculum review team? How often do they meet? What other committees did you take this through before you brought it to us, just so they can have a fuller picture of the whole thing?
Absolutely. Our curriculum review teams are primarily comprised of teachers in that subject area. So we had all of our art and music teachers participate in our review. Ten elementary teachers for visual arts and ten elementary teachers for music. And then approximately thirteen, thirteen or fourteen secondary music teachers and approximately the same number of art teachers at the high school, middle school and high school level. We had a representative group of teachers for K-5 Health and we also included school psychologists, nurses, and other members of our health services team and social workers to make sure that their voices were a part of the decision-making process with the social, emotional learning competencies that we included. We also invite members of our Pathways Advisory Team, the team that is part of our World's Best Workforce requirements to participate. And so we did have one parent representative who participated in our K-5 Health review. So the process, like I said earlier, typically takes two to three years and we bring our proposed revisions to several groups to vet that out before coming to you, including the Pathways Advisory Team, our District Diversity and Advisory Council, as well as our American Indian Parent Advisory Group.
Okay, thank you. I probably have more questions, but I'll let some other people ask some questions before I monopolize all the good ones.
Who would like to ask a question? Director Bibi.
You mentioned that they are starting the health curriculum on puberty in the fourth grade instead of the fifth grade. Can you give the explanation for that?
Yes, absolutely. As we were looking at research around health instruction, one of the recommendations from several groups, including the CDC, including the American Academy of Pediatrics, is to make sure that students have accurate health information prior to starting puberty. Research is indicating that students are beginning to go through puberty at a much earlier age, often beginning at age nine for some students. And we felt it was really critical that students had accurate information about the changes that their bodies would be going through prior to experiencing some of those changes. Thank you.
Anybody else? Director Bennett? Or Director Starks? Go ahead.
Well, actually, I was just gonna say I have a process question, so I'd rather Director Bennett talk, cause he's got more content questions than I just wanna ask a process question at the end.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so speaking of human growth and development or puberty, you know, I understand the reason to bring it down to fourth grade. But when I was reading some of the standards on there, one of them was like emotions or feelings? And I was wondering, what does that get into? Is it more like hormonal changes or are we talking about, is there any conversation about sexual attraction feelings or about gender identity feelings? Is there any of that kind of conversation at that age?
We do do a little bit of instruction as far as these are the changes that your body's going through. And for some people, the gender that they identify with may not match the gender that they have been physically assigned. However, we don't go into specific like attraction or instruction about sexual health at that point. So a lot of the feelings discussed are the hormonal changes as well as how to deal with feelings related to peers, how to properly express emotions when you're angry, when you are sad. And so some of the self-regulation kinds of skills that you need in order to successfully express your emotions.
Okay, and then another question I had, looking at the different standards, I think it was kindergarten, one of them was that a concept of family and like family support systems. And you know, Executive Director Kubas always says some of the best lines and one of his is like, you know, when our kids look into the curriculum, they should see windows and mirrors, windows looking into other people that don't look like them, but then also mirrors of self-reflection. So I'm wondering, are we covering all different kinds of families? Like if I were, say, in foster care, would I see myself in there? Or if I say had, you know, two fathers instead of a mother and a father? Or I was raised by an uncle or an aunt or grandma, would I see those families reflected back at me?
That is always our goal. So we do have some texts that we plan to integrate into the literacy block and we purposely choose texts that feature students from a variety of family situations as well as students who come from a variety of cultural backgrounds for that reason, to make sure that when students see themselves reflected in literature, that it is that windows and mirrors approach.
Well, that's, kindergarten is when kids start learning the concept of what's normal. And at least when we grew up, when you learned about family, it was, you know, a mom and a dad. And for all of, at least kids like me didn't have that, it's like, okay, well, then I'm not normal because this is what I perceive as normal. So I think it's important that we are touching on all those multiple families that, no, you might not have, may not have a mom and dad, but you were still, your family is still normal.
Yeah. You have a lot of network of people who care about you, right? That's the key message that we want to send.
Okay, so thank you.
Director Bennett, just to clear the record, I stole that line from Dr. Peggy McIntosh from Wellesley College, but I appreciate remembering it.
Oh, I love that line. You're like a Rob Reiner film, I always say. You always have the most quotable dialogue.
Okay, any other questions? No, no additional questions? Okay, hearing none, we're gonna go into the, oh, Director Starks, that's right, you wanted to say something else.
If I can.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, no, sorry, it's, my computer will take like 20 minutes to unmute, so my apologies. So here's my process question. So Rachel was very courteous to me today in taking a phone call and answering a bunch of questions about this process because I am new, so I really appreciate the time that she spent with me today. And a lot of the questions I had, she answered in her presentation and/or Director Bennett asked in terms of the curriculum, so I feel pretty confident about that. My concern or my question is, you know, when we get our board packet to get prepared for these meetings, we get it on a Friday. So Friday was the first time that I saw the different curriculums. And I did have a chance, as I mentioned, to talk to Rachel today to, you know, get some information. But that's only four days to digest three different curriculums that we're supposed to be approving. And then if you're a member of the public, this is the first time you're seeing any of this and you're gonna see it and it potentially will be approved within 20 minutes. And I'm wondering if there's any room for a process that leaves a little bit more time between the presentation of the curriculum itself to the time that it's approved? And I don't know if this is a Rachel question, if this is a Chair Corman question, but I'm just concerned about the speed by which this is happening. I know COVID has definitely created a lot of speed issues. But when it's, when it's something as important as curriculum and we only reviewed every six years, I just would like to, from my own perspective, share that I think it's going a little fast. And I'd like to see if there's any way to either slow down this round or in future rounds. For the benefit of public or for parents that this is the first time they're seeing this.
Yeah, just a quick comment about that, the packet that we get on Thursday. Usually, we give time for the Chair, Vice Chair, Superintendent to meet so that we can approve the agenda so that then the packet can be shared with everybody else. Director Bennett, you had the comment?
Whoops. Just to follow up on Heather's point, I think it's a valid point. That is a lot to digest in, you know, four days and then we don't really have opportunity, well, we could, but we don't have the conversation until Monday and then we approve it. So I mean, I wouldn't be against the idea if for future years where we got the presentation at one meeting, but we don't approve it to the next meeting. I don't know if that would, might be a better idea for, so we can ask those questions, go back and look at it, think about it some more. Community has an opportunity to look at it and ask questions before we vote on it. So I mean, it's something that we can look at next year.
Yeah, I'll jump in and say, obviously, this process is governed by policy and past practice. And so Director Stark's suggestion, that's something we can certainly look at. I would say that if there is clumsiness to this, it is because of the COVID and just making sure that everything is lining up. But a point that's certainly well-spoken and brought up, we can certainly look at that process. I'll take notes here and make sure that we're getting back to that. Fingers crossed, if we're in a more traditional setting next year, when we're at this place, then we could look at making some changes so that there is more time to digest, if you will, the curriculum and make a better informed decision. So I'll take that, I'll take that note. Thank you.
Thank you. And perhaps we can consider it within a status session meeting instead of a regular board meeting. Director Bibi.
I agree as well. I like to read deep into my notes that we get and go to the links because I learn an awful lot and I wanna be aware of what we're getting. And I did have, you know, I'd like to have had more time to look more into the music and also one of the other curriculums that was being used for health. I got through one of them pretty thoroughly and then the other one, I didn't get a chance to go as deep. So you've put all this work into it and so it seems like it would be an honor to give you the credit to look into what you've decided on as well and to understand why you chose it. For example, the art curriculum made me wanna go and sign up for an art class. You know, it just had some really new things and I went, this is great. I wish I could go and take these classes. So I think it's a way to give you credit for the work that you've done as well. If we can have a little bit more time, my weekend was quite full with things and so I wasn't able to get to it until today. And I spent about five hours reading, so I took time. So, thank you.
Thank you for taking that time.
You bet.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Director Olson.
I'll just say that, yes, I just, I reached out to my mentor, Tom, and asked him who looks at the curriculum ideas and I reached out to a music teacher and I reached out to the Office of Educational Equity just to- the Office of Educational Equity, just to confirm that other, that others are, you know, who is involved, just to ask who's involved, and I appreciate that you listed all of all of those people, Rachel, so that I I understood that, so I'm, I feel like I'm putting my trust into into who has worked on this, and I do trust who has worked on this, but it does feel like we're kind of, you know, voting without a lot of time, I agree, so it would, I would like to look at these things more deeply as well, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, hearing none, let's move into the resolutions. So the first one that we have is Visual Arts Grade K-12. Would someone like to read that resolution, please? Director Bennett?
Be it resolved that School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the revised curriculum sequence for K-12 Visual Arts, including course descriptions, prioritized benchmarks, and instructional material effective with the 2020-21 school year.
Is there a second?
Second, that Bibi?
Okay, any additional comments or questions from board members? Okay, hearing none, then all those in favor of approving this resolution, please say aye. Director Bibi?
Aye.
Director Bennett?
Aye.
Director Olson?
Aye.
Director Sorum?
Aye.
Director Starks?
Aye.
Director Stega?
Aye.
And Corman, aye, that is seven votes and approval, this resolution has passed. Moving into the next one, we have the music grades K-12. Would someone please read the resolution? Director Olson?
Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the revised curriculum sequence for K-12 Music, including course descriptions, prioritized benchmarks, and instructional materials effective with the 2020-21 school year.
Is there a second?
Second, Stega.
Okay, any additional questions, comments? Okay, none? Okay, so all those in favor of approving this resolution, please say aye. Director Bibi?
Aye.
Director Bennett?
Aye.
Director Olson?
Aye.
Director Sorum?
Aye.
Direct, Director Starks?
Aye.
Director Stega?
Aye.
And Director Corman, aye, so this resolution has seven votes, and it has been approved. And the last one we have here from curriculum, it's the health grades K-12. Someone please read the resolution.
Aye.
Director Bibi?
I had a question on this, because they're they're only really focusing on K through five, and yet this discusses K-12. Did anybody catch that?
It should be K-5, so when you read it, you could probably just say K-5.
Thank you.
Okay. Director Bibi, do you want to read it?
Sure. Resolve that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the revised curriculum sequence for K-5 Health, including course descriptions, prioritors, prioritized benchmarks, and instructional materials effective with the 2020-2021 school year.
Is there a second?
Second, Sorum.
Sorum. Thank you.
I had another question.
Yes, go ahead, Director Bennett.
Yes, with the whole COVID thing that's last year, I'm wondering, when we, I know we were talking about the human growth and development earlier, but did that actually happen in fifth grade? Because I had a fifth grader this last year, and he said they didn't do it. And I remember in the the winter conference, his fifth grade teacher told me that we're gonna do it, and they're gonna separate the boys in one class and the girls in the other, but then COVID happened, so I'm guessing it didn't get done, so when are those fifth graders gonna be taught that?
So can I just say, I have a fifth grader as well, and I received an email with the curriculum, and we were given the choice to to teach it on our own. And you can imagine how my fifth grader felt about that.
So is that pretty much how it was done district-wide, maybe I just missed the email, or I don't know, if Rachel or Andrew, Andy could speak to that?
Yeah, Rachel.
I can speak to that, yes, there was a lot of debate about whether this would be an appropriate topic to deliver through a distance learning model. We did send in an email, so it was shared with principals to distribute to their sites district-wide for all K-5 elementary schools with the materials that Director Starks referenced. And then we will also be working with our sixth grade health teachers next year to let them know that this was not a topic that was addressed per the normal procedure in fifth grade, and so there may need to be some reteaching associated with that in the fall.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments in regards to this resolution? Mr. Kuba, any additional comments? No, okay, so let's vote. Okay, all those in favor of approving this resolution, please say aye. Director Bibi?
Aye.
Director Bennett?
Aye.
Director Olson?
Aye.
Director Sorum?
Aye.
Director Starks?
Aye.
Director Stega?
Aye.
And Corman, aye, that is seven votes, and the resolution passes. So moving to, thank you both for your presentations today.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move into our next item, which is the bid award Milk and Related Dairy Products 2020-2021, and we have Brad Sirkovich with us today. Would someone please read this resolution?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 accepts the St. Paul Beverage Solutions, St. Paul, Minnesota bid to provide milk and related dairy products to the district for the period of July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2022, and approves administration entering into a contract with St. Paul Beverage Solutions to facilitate these purchases.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, that was Director Olson, I think. Okay, so Brad Sirkovich, Executive Director of Finance and Support Services, go ahead.
Chair Corman, Superintendent Fujitaki, board members, this is a bid that we've we've done over the years. We've had some issues with milk in the past, we switched to this vendor back in February of this year. Everything that we've received from them, the service, the quality, and that has been been a great job by them, so we're very pleased that this vendor was the winning bid, even though it was the only bid, it was the winning bid to be able to have them partnering with us moving forward.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions, Director Bennett?
Yes, I'm always a little concerned when we only have one bid, because it's hard to say, okay, is that the lowest and most responsible bid? Well, when there's only one, there is, so I mean, so when this bid came in, did it come in lines of what you would expected, or was it a little high, a little low, or I don't know if you can?
It was, it was what we expected. Some of the other vendors, you know, we can, we can say some of the issues we're having is because of their, like you're seeing across the country, of not having the drivers, so we weren't getting product and the rest, and this group has providing us the the product on a timely basis, and also at a reasonable price.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Doesn't seem like there's any others, so we'll move into voting for this resolution. All those in favor of approving this resolution, please say aye. Let's start with Director Bibi again.
Aye.
Director Bennett?
Aye.
Director Olson?
Aye.
Director Sorum?
Aye.
Director Starks?
Aye.
Director Stega?
Aye.
And Director Corman is aye, so we have seven votes, and this resolution has been approved. So now we're gonna move into our presentation, the Preliminary 2020-2021 Budget Food Service and General Fund Presentation, and we have Brad Sirkovich with us again. Go ahead, Mr. Sirkovich.
Chair Corman, Superintendent Fujitaki, board members, this is the second presentation of the budget for the 2021 school year. As you remember, back in May 26th, we showed you the budget for Community Ed. Tonight will be the rest of the budgets, along with a summary of Community Ed also again. One thing to remember with this presentation, as was mentioned in the presentation back in May, is that this is a little different than in prior years. This is our our best projections at this point in time, where we usually only update the information once in a December or January timeframe. We might be changing these projections as the years go on, or the months go on, I should say, based on new information we get from the Department of Education, the Department of Health, the CDC, and the rest. So just an awareness as we go through these presentations, those different aspects of things. So overall, tonight's presentation is to provide information for the board to prepare to make, take action at the next board meeting for the 2021 budget. As I mentioned, no board action is required for tonight. Kind of looking at a timeline, as I mentioned, the May 26th, we did a community education budget. Tonight, we're covering all the other funds, and then on the 22nd, at the next board meeting, we'll take action on the final budget. So looking at our strategic plan, our strategic plan is led by our program areas of student services, academic services, you have your resource plans underneath that support all those academic areas, and the budget, annual budget is under the financial plan. So just kind of looking at all the different funds, we have the capital and deferred maintenance funds, which include operating capital, all facility deferred maintenance, any construction, capital projects, which is our technology and security, our debt service, which is our bond and interest payments, our insurance and internal services, which is dental, medical, our other post-employment trust and the debt on that trust, then our internal services, and then our operating funds, food service, community ed. Two new ones you're seeing here are support programs and agencies, with some of the new format of how we're presenting the budget, and also new requirements of generally accepted accounting principles. We've had to add two new areas within this area, and then we have the general fund and transportation. So if we move forward to the the capital, operating capital, what's included in operating capital are building improvements, anything permanent fixtures, long-term items, copy machine, textbooks, any vehicles, and musical instruments. So if you look at, this is also kind of the structure of what we've presented in the past is a little different, because we've done a projection here. Our original budget proposal was to spend down $741,000. Our projection is is to stay pretty close to that number, with our budget for next year to be actually showing an additional fund balance of $16,000. One of the main reasons for the less expenditures next year is that because of a partial year of not using buses, we have deferred our bus purchases of about a half a million dollars for the next year, and passing that on to 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 move that replacement cycle out one year. All facilities, this is mainly like the project that we're running into right now at Valley View Middle School, but you can kind of see all the different areas here that are covered within this budget, so all our deferred maintenance projects within the district. If you look at our original budget, we projected the whole project at, on, for Valley View versus a two-year project, it was an error in our how we budgeted. So you can see with the updated projections, showing less expenditures, showing that we still have $9.2 million carryover for to complete the Valley View project into next year with additional revenue of $4.6 million, showing expenditures this next year of just under $14 million, to pretty much use up the whole fund balance for this project to finalize things with the Valley View project, right in line with what we were expecting. The capital project fund balance, this is our security and deferred, security and technology showing here, the overall projections here, we were projecting to spend down a $1.4 million, tend up at 1.8. Actually, we did some additional transfer in of funds this year, which I'll share with the board as we move through the other budgets, to show that we're technically only gonna spend down for 422,000 in fund balance. Going into next year's budget, it's showing a slight spend down of $154,000, still having a fund balance of $2.7 million at the end of next year. Breaking down the revenue, how we allocate revenue for between the security and technology, a lot of the big security projects are done, we just finished up this last year, radio systems, finishing those pieces up, we've done security cameras, we've done the entrances, all those areas, so there's just more of the annual maintenance and the rest of the $600,000. The majority of the money that comes in is being used on technology and technology projects. So I'll stop at this time, if there's any questions on the capital and deferred maintenance budgets.
Questions? Doesn't look like there's any questions right now.
We'll move on. Debt service, again, this is our principal and interest payments on our bonds that we have sold over the years. Showing at the beginning of this year, the budget was to spend down about $381,000 to have an ending fund balance of a million. Some of that is a little bit higher, the majority of the is revenue dropped, and part of that was is about the last few months of the year, our interest that we were getting on the dollars that were invested within this fund have dropped down, so that's the good portion of the reduction in revenue in this area, where our expenditures are pretty consistent, still showing that we're at a million-dollar fund balance ending at this year. Carrying that forward, as I mentioned to the board in the past, the state requires us to, whatever our principal and interest payments are, we're needing to levy 105% of that, and then over time, the state takes back those dollars, and that's what we're kind of seeing this year with the $638,000, is some of that take back, showing that we'll end up this year at just under $400,000 of fund balance in this area. Questions on debt service?
Any questions? No?
Okay. Move to the next area of the self-insured dental. Our projected, not real much of a change between what was proposed in the budget versus what the projections were, showing a slight reduction in revenue, some of that being interest, some of it being a little more in participation. We're showing, going into next year with some of the staffing reductions that we've had, our premiums or the amount of collections will be down to 1.3 million. We feel the expenses are gonna be pretty consistent, so it's still showing that we will end next year at just under a million dollars, which is still a very strong fund balance. at just under a million dollars, which is still a very strong fund balance for this this fund. This is, I believe, the seventh year in a row that we have not increased our premiums in this budget. So it's for both the district and the employee. It has been good that we've been able to keep the cost of offering this benefit to employees at a reasonable price. Our self-insured medical. We are projecting a a increase in fund balance of $865,000. I think based on what we're projecting in May, we're showing that to be about 725,000. Still a very good position to be in and ending just under $15 million. We're showing next year of again, a little bit down in the way of premiums just for the sense that we have less employees and also looking at less interest dollars moving forward. We still, like I mentioned, seeing a just under $250,000 improvement with that with this fund. And the premium increase that the board approved two years ago is a 1% increase. This is another example of the successes of the district of, I believe, over the last six or seven years, we've been in single digits and increases. In the last four years, it's been two threes and two ones. So again, helping both the employee that has family coverage and also the district as itself by not having large increases in our insurance premiums. Our other post-employment benefits. Looking at that, pretty much a with the OPEB trust, really not much of a change. The only change between the proposed budget and the projections are the interest revenue that we're projecting going forward. You can see that also in the next year's proposed budget, showing that $100,000 of interest revenue and then expenditures of about a million dollars to offset the cost for the general fund and other operating funds because we have this trust in place. The debt service on the bonds that we sold back in 2009. It's showing that pretty much no change between the proposal and what proposed budget and projections. The reason for the drop, if you remember, a couple of years ago, we refinanced our bonds. So we saw that interest rates were lower. Switched the the resold the bonds when we did some old facility. That's why we're showing that a $380,000 less in revenue and actually almost a 500,000 less in expenditures because of that refinancing. These bonds will expire in the 2024 school year. And so as you go, if I can go back to this back to here is we're still having the $12 million out there to to protect ourselves to the future. And within a three-year period of time, we'll have those bonds paid off. So we'll protect ourselves in the general fund and other operating funds through in investment in the past. We've paid that off now and now are protecting ourselves to the tune of a million dollars a year in the operating fund. Internal services, this is a fund that we use for other either vacation payouts, other severance, also a protection for us when the state changes the retirement requirements that the district has to pay for the teachers' units and also non-teacher units. We have a cushion that we can at least go a couple of years to be able to protect ourselves. You can see with the projection here, the million dollars, as I mentioned before, based on excesses that we had in this fund, we projected, we moved over a million dollars of these costs over to the capital projects levy for technology work within the district systems. Questions on internal services and self-insurance funds?
Director Bennett?
Yes, I'm back on the dental page. I was wondering now that we've dipped below the million-dollar fund balance and we're still not increasing premiums at all. At what point would you recommend increasing the premiums?
I would see if we were under 50% of expenditures. I think we're very, very strong in this area and we've tried to do many things. I think you've been on the insurance committees. I think you know that we've tried to do many things to try to drive down the fund balance or at least not increase it and try to keep things flat, giving more benefits than the rest. We haven't been able to, we've seen a little bit drop recently. But for the most part, we've been flat over the probably the last five or six years.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? No more questions?
Now we get into the operating funds and I guess before I start the operating funds and since we're on food service, I'd like to just give a thanks to all the food service employees, the paras, the transportation custodians for the fantastic job they did from March 18 until last Thursday. What we were able to accomplish with the grab and go program, how many meals we served, the especially doing meals that we provided for the weekends where we had six plus pound bags that people were lifting and carrying and putting in cars and that. I just want to really give a thanks to all the the staff that contributed to accomplishing that and to the success of that, even though we're showing, as you'll see with the budget and the projections, that we lost some money, we could have never done what we were able to and eliminate some of the the losses if it wasn't for all the groups that participated in that planning. And also I would like to say is to the listening audience that during the summer, the program is still going. And it's at Kennedy High School and Valley View Middle School. And it's a from 11 to 1 each day. So just want to make sure that the understanding that the group is still providing those meals on a day-to-day basis. So after that, I'll kind of go into the food service proposed assumptions. Back in 1920, we talked to the board about a pilot with Minneapolis and looking at three of our sites. Kennedy, Valley View at Indian Mounds, looked at some new options and we had a projected 10 cents a meal increase. Our projection, our assumptions for this next year is to put a hold on the pilot. I think with some of the changes that we've made in leadership within the group and also some of the individuals stepping up and what we've learned through this difficult process of the grab and go. We feel that we can implement some of the things that were recommended by Minneapolis and the rest. So we're putting a hold on the the project and moving forward with implementing some of the new menu items and some of the new changes ourselves. We are not proposing any mealing price increases. As you'll see with the next couple of slides, we feel we're still in the middle of our neighbors. And what we've tried to propose over time is to stay in that middle. So if we look, compare elementary prices here, you can see the only school district around us that's increasing prices is West St. Paul. They're increasing 10 cents, even with that 10 cents are right at our 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 level. Go to the middle school, similar, we're right in the middle. West St. Paul again is the only one that's increasing theirs 10 cents. And the same thing at the high school level. Kind of just a summary of over the years, you can kind of see in the elementary, middle school and high school. We increased it from 17, 18 to 18, 19, 5 cents, then 10 cents last year. We're holding this year flat. Adult meals, it was holding it flat for one year, 10 cents. And then holding it flat the next year also. Breakfast, we haven't changed the price of breakfast in quite a few years. And part of that reason is that all our K-12 sites, except for Jefferson, Hillcrest and Valley Ridgeview are all free at this point. So the cost of increasing those, we don't see that we would get any benefit. We probably lose participation, which in in the overall would hurt both our students and also our our financials. So if we look at our proposed budget for food service coming into this year, we started with a fund balance of $834,000. We projected a spend down of around $50,000 and ending of 785,000 dollar fund balance, which is about 15.3% of our expenditures. In in our budget policy, part of regulation states that the board recommends that we have at least a 15% of expenditure fund balance within food service. After this presentation tonight, we will be bringing the both the fund balance policy and the budget policy to the policy committee for possible changes to the policy for the board to decide on in the final meeting on the 22nd. So if we look at our projections, as I mentioned, we we kept our revenue fairly close to where we thought we would be. But with the grab and go meals, the packaging and everything else, the expenditures were considerably higher. So we're projecting instead of losing 50,000, projected to lose $272,000 this year. Still having a a solid fund balance at $562,000 or 10.7% of expenditures. The proposal for next year's budget is to spend down a fund balance of about $60,000, ending the year at just over $500,000 or a 10% fund balance of expenditures. Questions, food service?
Director Starks?
So I have a question about, you know, the significant change in our expenditures, given the the situation. Was there any talk either at the state level or at the federal level of supporting school districts with those increased expenses?
I think there was discussion, but nothing was ever put into legislation for it.
Okay, so we don't have any source of support to to cover that?
No, the recommendation was to use other fund balances to cover it.
Okay. And then my other question is if we do not go back in person in the fall and we have to continue the grab and go type meal service, would we be looking at another huge expenditure change?
Yes, this could, this could have a significant change to our fund balance. This is, as we mentioned with community ed, this is best case scenario type presentations. And as we get to know more, we'll start updating the board with possible options of what type of cost. But yeah, this is the $60,000 loss is the best case scenario.
Okay, thank you.
Director Bennett?
Yes, thank you. So the 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 project we were doing with Minneapolis Public Schools, I know we were paying a monthly fee for that. Were we still paying for that when we weren't having a school?
No, we we we, when we agreed to separate during when in March, we have not paid anything since March. And we're, like I said, on hold until we plan on getting back together June of 21 and discuss next direction if we want to just go our separate ways or what type of partnership we want after that point in time.
Okay, so didn't we already approve another contract for next year with them?
No, I think what we we talked about with them is possible moving for, keep moving forward with them. We have not agreed to a new contract yet.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we weren't, you know, going to be on the hook for some cancellation penalty or something that would have to pay them or anything.
No, this was a, I think both sides decided that with everything going on for them to do, take on more right now too, it was difficult.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Mr. Sikovic, that also means that if we decide and the following year to come back to this one, we we can still work with Minneapolis?
Correct. It's 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 always been the the project together is always, both sides have said it has to be a win-win. It can't be one-sided type of thing and the state has been involved from day one on our partnership. And they were under the same premises as the two districts were.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? I don't see any other ones.
The next is a community ed, which Executive Director Jake, last meeting talked about the different areas. Here again, it's just kind of a breakdown of those areas. We have the fee programs, the area learning programs, adult education, and then other. You saw these numbers last time that we were projected about a half a million dollars spend down in the original budget. The projections right now are just under a million dollars. Their projections for the 2021 budget is just under 621,000. Questions on community education? Next area, part of this, the supporting programs used to be part of community education. And I think what with this whole COVID-19 and looking at community ed closer, I think for both the public and the board of breaking these couple of pieces out and separating them gets a little clearer picture on that last slide of just what community education is. And then these are just other programs that need to be under the community ed umbrella, even though they're not really operating costs within that program. They're more of flow-throughs of expenditures and revenues. So if you look at the project, original projection of these programs was right around $900,000. What we're projecting for 1920 to come in at is 517,000. The majority of this reduction is that we've moved the Galaxy program, which was Galaxy was tied to the middle school targeted services. We moved that, combined it together within the general fund and moved it out of the community ed fund completely. That's why projecting for next year within these areas of $543,000. Any questions on this? Again, it's a flow-through of revenue and expenditures. Making sure any shortfalls would have to get picked up by the general fund in any regard.
Nellie, Nellie, I have a question. Now with the whole reorganization somewhat, as you call it, and including these flow terms, would have they always been flow-through programs that kind of pick? You know, as they go along, they just, this is what we expenses we have and this is what revenue we have coming in. How is that going to affect the 2021 budget overall for community ed?
It shouldn't have any effect at all. It's it's been the same since day one. It just is, it just takes out the overall, really not any programming pieces. This is This is more of facilities and non-public type programs that the community ed really doesn't have any input on or any interaction with.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? No other questions.
Next area is the agency funds. This was required with the GASB regulations that BECTV and student activities that used to be separate funds that we really didn't bring to the board as budgets. They required that this be brought to the board as budgets and under board control as we move forward. So if you look at our proposed budget, it had a fund balance of $650,000. Revenue expenditures, again, it's mainly a flow-through in these areas to show that the ending was 643. As you can kind of see the difference between what was proposed in the budget, in the proposed budget, we did not include student activities budget. So this is where we think student activities along with BECTV will come in at this next year, which is a loss of just under $37,000. We're projecting with both of them next year in the proposed budget to be pretty much a wash at $944,000. Questions on the agency funds? Nope, okay. The last one, general fund and transportation. So if we look at our general fund revenue, $148.1 million, 73% of that is coming from the state. 21.5% is coming through levy, and then federal 2.7, other 2.7. Kind of look, looking at it in a little more in chart format, is the state, which is formula revenue, special ed, and other revenues is $108 million. The levy, which is our operating referendum, safe schools levy, equity, career tech, 31.8. Federal, which includes title programs and special ed, 4.1 million. And then other, which is interest, tuition, any rentals, any fees of $4 million. So the biggest part of the general fund revenue is our formula revenue, and that's based on the number of students times per student revenue or per student rate, which then is our total revenue. So if we look at our students, our students are declining. And you can kind of see over the last couple of years, you can kind of see the difference of the year-end average daily membership and the computed pupil units, which is the difference that is, is that kindergarten through sixth grade gets a weighting of a 1.0. Anybody that's in seventh grade through 12th grade gets a weighting of 1.2. Some of the rationale for that is with these, a lot more student activities, athletics and that in the secondary area, and then also the additional cost of secondary. So looking at it overall, we see that it was increasing over time up to kind of our highest point recently back in 1819. Last two years, we've seen a drop of about 100 per year. Part of the reason of the increase over time was that back in 1516, we worked with Normandale Community College to do a partnership with post-secondary enrollment options with them, rather than running it through the state, which we picked up some enrollment there. The following year was the first year of voluntary pre-K. And then the year after that, we started seeing increasing in our pre-K special ed programming, which drove up the revenue over the last few years. We look at the per student rate in legislation as a 2% increase. Kind of looking at our increases over the last few years, we've seen a percentage increase of 2%. But you can see from this chart of how enrollment impacts us. Back in 1718, with a 2% increase, we increased our revenue by $1.9 million. This year, with a 2% increase, we're only increasing our revenue by $521,000. Revenue plays such a big role in our overall budget. So kind of looking at a comparison to last year's budget on the different areas, you can see the general fund allowance up slightly. Special ed, we show about a million dollar increase there, so our subtotal with there is up about little over one and a half million dollars. Our other state is fairly flat. Levy is flat. Federal grants are down $400,000. We had a circle grant for two years of about $400,000. That circle grant ended with the 1920 school year. And then local is fairly flat also, which shows the difference of about $600,000 difference in revenue between the two years. Expenditures, kind of the breakdown of $149.2 million. 47.3 is instruction, vocational, just under 1%, special ed 25.8%. You can kind of see the other categories of instructional support, student support, transportation, and operations. Kind of looking at it in a different form and showing the instructional costs are just under $71 million. Vocational and special ed, just under $40 million. Instructional and student services, 12.9 million. Custodial, 8.4, transportation, 8.4, administration, 6.1, and then district support, 2.2. So looking at the proposed budget that we submitted back in December, showed that we were going to spend down about $1.1 million and have an ending fund balance of just under $9 million or 6% of expenditures. I think based on what we're seeing and projecting out with some of the savings we've seen with not having subs and some of the other utility costs, offset by some of the extra costs for personal protection equipment and other costs incurred by COVID-19, I think we still should be in the general fund right in line with our budgeted numbers. Going into next year's budget, we're projected after that $3.5 million budget reduction, we're still planning on spending down $1.1 million in fund balance. Our original projections were showing that we would only be spending down about $700,000. So this is about $400,000 more than we were projecting spending down in our projections. It still says that we're at 5.3%, which still is within the fund balance policy of the board of the 5% fund balance goal. Questions, general fund?
Oh, yeah.
Director Sorum.
Thank you. Well, 62 slides later, Rod, thanks for all your data collection and information. And as a numbers guy, as we went through all of that RSB2, you know, just to get to where we were and the hassle and everything else that went through, we lucked out unfortunately due to COVID and other things like that, that we have a nice, friendly fund balance, you know, of over 5%. And hopefully that'll work out with all the planning and everything else that's going on with all of the different departments and so forth. It's amazing. Thank you for that work and less also, you know, because that's his strength, and it was mine until I retired. Now I don't know what numbers mean anymore. But the idea that we can do this and work from a nice budget now, then we go into the '21-'22 session where we're still looking at some, because of the cost increases and some of the things that we've got, we're looking again at some more reductions in the next year, right?
Correct, and it's also depending on what are the requirements for us as we plan for the fall.
Yeah, yeah, that too. So we still have some questions, but it looks good when we approve this budget at the end of the month for 2021, then it still looks good, but there's always those situations that occur that gratefully we have the fund balance to take care of. Thank you.
Director Olson.
Did I hear correctly that we have less revenue per student, and if so, could you explain that?
We don't have less revenue per student. What I'm saying is because we had, our number of students went down, we didn't get 2% more in revenue than we got last year. We only got 2% on the students that we still have, and since we dropped about 100 and some students, that drop of 100 and some students, you know, if we look at, a student is $10,000, 150 students is $1.5 million.
Okay, thank you.
Director Starks and then Director Bibi.
Well, so this is a question for Chair Corman. Is this an appropriate time to talk about plans for the fall and related to the budget now? Or should I wait till this budget conversation's over and then bring that up later?
That is a good question. Any recommendations from Superintendent? I think we should wait.
Can you clarify the question a little more?
Well, so what I'm, you know, we're looking at these projections, and I guess I'm wondering when, when we're looking at like the CDC requirements or guidelines right now for a reopening in the fall related to transportation, related to a 1 to 9 teacher ratio, where is the balance or who's in charge of the conversation of, okay, the CDC says we can do this, but financially we can't afford it?
I think that that's what we've had conversations about and what I mentioned about the budgets themselves. We're budgeting, we're giving you a budget that is based on things are as normal. And then from that point, these are best case scenarios. And then from that point on, we start, as we get more and more information, we come back to the board of what is that impact? And we'll have to do budget adjustments to put us at that impact.
Okay, perfect. So I guess my request maybe is when we're communicating to parents over the summer and the fall about how we came to a decision to do X, and maybe it's because, you know, well, we don't have enough buses to only transport 14 kids per bus load or whatever. Like that balance between our financial picture versus what's best for kids? I'm not phrasing it correctly, but that that's a part of the conversation or part of the communication that goes out when we're making those decisions or sharing the decisions.
No, I will make note of that to make sure that we have the financial impact of all our decisions.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Director Bibi.
Mine was on the same lines as that with anticipated costs that will come. Has that been budgeted? If this is what we have to do in looking at, you know, a hybrid model per se, what's that going to cost us if we do it as normal, everything at school? And then also where it's been proposed that there's an online school, could that potentially increase our students that we get because of the online program that has occurred in some other districts in Southern Minnesota when they went to having an online program?
The answer is that I would never want to project increased enrollment that I don't have in the door. I think that what we're saying here and being clear with the board is that what we're projecting and what we're providing the board for approval on June 22nd is the best case scenario. From that point, there's going to be some difficult decisions depending on guidance that we get from MDE, Department of Health, CDC, and, you know, how they determine how, what we can do and what we can't do. And then we're going to have to look at how financially we do that and how that impacts us and the board. We'll come back to the board with those recommendations.
Thank you. Director Bennett.
Yeah, so, well, first of all, thank you, Rod, for all your work on this. I know this has probably got to be one of the most difficult budgets that you've had to do in your career, just with all the uncertainties and unknowns and all the variables. So I appreciate your hard work and your flexibility on all this. And it's got to be pretty stressful trying to figure all this out. One of the questions that I have is if everything goes back to normal in fall, and that's a big if, and that includes athletics, when we were doing our budget cutting process, we never did anything with middle school athletics. So is that still budgeted for that to continue since we didn't cut that money? So is that middle school athletics being budgeted for next year?
The middle school in the budget itself right now, there is nothing for middle school athletics.
So if we don't have any type of resolution, then because we didn't, we took that part off, so we didn't technically cut middle school athletics. So until we address that, then shouldn't we still have middle school athletics?
I think it's a discussion of what the board wants to do in the final proposal.
Well, I think we have to decide on this before, at our next meeting, because it hasn't been addressed yet. I know there were some other ideas that the superintendent was going to kick around, but then, you know, COVID happened and kind of everyone's world changed, and that's not really, you know, the top priority. But now that we have the budget, if, you know, we didn't vote to cut it, then we don't make any other arrangements, then I would assume that that would continue unless we take board action to change it.
Superintendent, would you like to add something to that?
Sure, thank you, Chair Corbin. We'll get back to the board on this question. That's a good question, Director Bennett. We'll get back to you. These things happen because of COVID. Some of the programs that we're anticipating kicking in to help out, they ran into financial trouble. So we, that fell aside, so we have to take another look at it.
Yeah, very good point, Director Bennett. Thank you for bringing it up.
To me, Chair Corbin, I'd like to share something with the viewing audience if I could.
Yes, please.
Okay, this has to do with this line of questioning. Recently, the most, the question I'm asked most is when will the school community learn what schools will look like this fall? The second most frequent question asked is, will parents, students, and staff have input on what schools will look like this fall? I'll take this opportunity to answer both questions. I want to assure everyone that we are earnestly working to develop plans for this fall, but it's very complicated, as you can hear by what Rod is sharing with you. Our district has over 12 teams working to adjust and adapt our systems to comply with CDC and state and safety educational guidelines, and also all this funding issues. However, the work of these teams are handicapped because the current guidelines from the CDC and the state, and even the funding things are so unclear, and some don't appear practical. I think Director Starks pointed out that most of our school buses can seat 77 students. The CDC guidelines would just allow only 14 students on those buses. These types of guidelines present us with a planning dilemma. Our teams can use these apparent impractical guidelines to do their planning, and if the teams wait for new guidelines, we'll probably run out of time. So our teams are developing multiple models of what schools might look like this fall. The district is a complex network of systems, so planning for more than one model is time-consuming and complicated. Our strategy is that one of our models will align or will just will align or will just need some slight adjustments to meet the new guidelines. Hope everybody can follow that. We're coming up with multiple models in anticipation of guidelines. And this includes funding and we'll be bringing all this thing back to the board in the coming months. And so these teams are also engaging students, staff and parents with respect to when we'll have answers. People just need to stay tuned because guidelines are going to be forthcoming from the state and the feds this month and next month. Therefore, we'll continue to provide periodic updates on the budget and all the programming plans for this fall throughout the summer. And we'll go through the board first and then we'll share it with the public. And these updates will be shared through communication channels, websites, social media, email and others. I hope the, and I want to thank everybody for their patience and understanding, but the teams are working earnestly hard and trying to come up with different scenarios in anticipation of uncertain guidelines that are forthcoming and the funding guidelines. So everybody's working really hard. We'll keep the board and the public informed. I hope that helps. Back to you, Chair Corman.
Yeah, thank you, Superintendent Fujitaki, for that information. I know that everybody has been waiting to hear and including us, you know, and I know we're kind of pretty much waiting on guidelines that we are unsure when that when they will be coming up. So thank you for being proactive and having all your people and members of your teams working on this right now. Are there any other questions in relation to this presentation? Mr. Sivkovich there, in your slide, budget expenditures by program. Would you go back to that one? You show that there's for special education and vocational services, there's on in expenditures. Can you tell us how much of that or what percentage of that goes to schools that are not district schools?
When you say non-district schools, are you talking about like 917?
Or charter schools?
None of, none of this is charter schools. This is all, this would all be special ed that is being done within our district.
Within our district.
Because even the 917, those for the most part, those are all done through tuition billing. So they take the, our revenue before we even get it.
Okay. 917 included. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? No, doesn't look like.
Okay, and we'll be back to the board at the next board meeting for, to have action on the final resolution. Since we have to approve it by the end of June.
Thank you, Mr. Sivkovich.
Thank you.
Very good. So we're moving into our next item. Let's see, we have a resolution. Yes, number six, final resolution to place tenured teachers on unrequested leave of absence. Would someone please read that resolution? Did I see a hand? Director Bennett.
Okay. Attached is a final resolution to place senior teachers on, teachers on unrequested leave of absence. Be resolved, the School Board of Independent School District Number 271 hereby approves each of the separation resolutions as attached here to placing the following teachers on unrequested leave of absence. Perry Rudy, Caitlin Walters, Melissa Maloney, Mary Ann Boniface.
Is there a second?
Second, Pat Bibi.
Thank you. Mrs. Mary Burris, Executive Director of Human Resources.
Chair Corman, Superintendent Fujitaki and members of the school board. This is the final resolution for the tenured teachers that we are putting on unrequested leave of absence. That's also notifying the board that the time for hearing requests have passed.
Questions, comments? Hearing none. We're moving to vote now. All those in favor of approving this final resolution, please say aye. Let's start with Director Bibi.
Aye.
Director Bennett?
Aye.
Director Olson? Sorry, I got my dog barking. Director Sorum?
Aye.
Director Starks?
Aye.
Director Stega?
Aye.
And Corman, aye, this one resolution passes. Thank you. Okay, so next we have the safe and supportive schools update. And I'd like to call Jenna Mitchler, Assistant Superintendent, please.
Excuse me, Chair Corman, I'd like to jump in here. Dr. Mitchler and I agreed that it might be helpful if I took this opportunity to frame for our viewing audience how the development of safe and supportive schools became one of our district's top priorities. And I'll go back in time. Annual external events brought into focus on our district's need for safe, supportive schools. And I'll go back to 2016. Four years ago, the newly enacted Federal Every Student Succeeds Act, ESSA, required states to choose and measure and report on a non-academic accountability indicator. In other words, they wanted a non-academic indicator. So Minnesota chose student attendance to be our state's non-academic accountability indicator. And they chose attendance because they wanted a way to measure school climate. As a result of that action, our district started setting attendance targets by school. We believe that school climate was strategically important to measure. And we weren't satisfied that attendance was the only metric should be used. So we continue to search for other school metrics, climate metrics. Then the following is 17. The Minnesota Department of Human Rights warned 43 districts and charter schools of discipline disparities. I think many of you recall that. And Bloomington was one of the 43 districts and charter schools cited. What we did was we came up with a plan, proposed it to MDHR to address our discipline disparities and the MDHR accepted our plan. Basically, we need to improve the way we're disciplining our students. Then the, that same year, we started to use the term safe and supportive schools. That's in 17. Then in 18, the Cruz-Guzman lawsuit came forward. All of you recall that. They alleged that the minorities were not getting adequate education. And we began meeting with the state mediators and our district began meeting state mediators and the State Attorney General's Office. So those three major events, identifying student attendance, looking at discipline disparities, and again, addressing this thing about the Cruz-Guzman lawsuit. Brought forward our need to really focus on safe, supportive schools. Then we had an opportunity in 19. We needed to find a new assistant superintendent. In the past, assistant superintendents would focus on curriculum instruction. We decided to look for a leader who could lead our learning supports component with a focus or emphasis on safe, supportive schools. We found Dr. Mitchler. She fit what we're looking for. And I'm happy to report that Jenna's work and results confirmed that she was a right choice to lead the safe, supportive schools work. And that's what brought us here tonight. So I'm going to turn the microphone over to Dr. Mitchler so she can continue to facilitate our boards and district's safe, supportive schools work. Dr. Mitchler?
Thank you for that bit of history, Superintendent Fujitaki. So Chair Corman, members of the board, superintendent. Tonight I'll be presenting, just as the superintendent has said, some information about our safe and supportive schools work from this past year. I'm going to share some slides with you. But I want you to know that this is going to be the first of a couple of different presentations. And so this has been to be a brief, a brief presentation to give you a little bit of an introduction into what, what we had accomplished this year and what we hope to do moving forward. So I'm hoping everyone can see my slides. So for this presentation, there are a couple of objectives. The first one is I just want to discuss with the, with the board the reason why safe and supportive schools is an important plan for us to have in Bloomington Public Schools. So the superintendent gave us a history of how this has come to be. And I'll talk a little bit more about the importance of the plan. The second objective that I have for this presentation tonight is to talk through some of the results of my work this past year in my role as Assistant Superintendent, looking at how we can create a safe and supportive school system within Bloomington. And then the third objective is to just briefly start to talk about the school board's responsibility with leadership. And what I might suggest would be some next steps. So first off, you know, I just wanted to say there are three things that really guided this work this year. And of course, the mission statement for us in Bloomington Public Schools was one of those key things that guided the work. So we know that we want all of our learners to have the ability to thrive in a rapidly changing world. And that truly is why we want to have the most safe and supportive school system possible. Another one of the key components that helped guide this work this year was the pathways to graduation vision that we have pathways to college and career, career and college. And so we used this this vision as we started to work through what was happening currently in Bloomington Public Schools and assess what, what we needed to do moving forward. In order to do the current status assessment of where we were at and start thinking about what we needed to do moving forward, we used a process called design thinking. And so what you see here on this slide is a, just a little introduction to what design thinking looks like. So there are six key phases to design thinking. The first is that you empathize with your stakeholders. You learn what it is your stakeholders are hoping for. So in our case, our community, our families, our students, our staff. And then from there, you start to define what is it you want to create? What is a safe and supportive school system within Bloomington Public Schools? What does that look like? Once you've defined out what you want that to look like, you start to do this planning and ideating where there's some brainstorming, you're thinking of creative ideas, and then you start to test some of these out. You prototype, see what works. You study the results, look at the data, and then where you find that things are working, you try to scale up. So I'll talk just briefly about some of the things that have surfaced this past year through using this design thinking process. There are three key areas of safe and supportive schools that have, as I said, surfaced through this work. So the first is a climate of care is something that we really know our stakeholders are looking for. When we connected with families, when we sent out surveys to staff, we looked at data from the district, from our equity survey, for example, from our student surveys. We found out that what students, staff and families really want is a system where we have mental, physical and social and emotional health as a priority. They also want to have spaces that foster a sense of belonging and nurturing and care. They want to have respect and care for all, resulting in positive behaviors and relationships and communications with stakeholders that can ensure equitable access. Now you'll notice that this is the first time you've seen the word equity mentioned in these slides under equitable access. But keep in mind that equity really is a value that's undergirding the work of safe and supportive schools. You know, the definition of equity is fairness and giving, giving folks what they need. And so that's really what this is all about. So the second of three areas that we surfaced as an area for our safe and supportive school system is tailored instruction. So there's three key areas here. Learning opportunities that utilize universal design and are personalized for students, students, staff and community. Tears of support that support the differentiation and customization of learning for students and staff. And then responsiveness to strengths, needs, interests and aspirations of learners. And so we say that meaning students here, but also adults and thinking through our professional development. And then the third area that had surfaced around safe and supportive schools that we can continue to grow is around meaningful engagement. So this would be thinking about valuing and recognizing elevating the assets of each person and what they bring to our community. And then thinking through connections and trying to make sure we're connecting all of our learners to each other and to the community and trying to do some of the same with our staff as well. And then thirdly, opportunities for collaborative problem solving and problem identification. So these are the three areas for safe and supportive schools that have surfaced this past year as I've engaged with our stakeholders, with our staff to really find out what it is we're trying to build with a safe and supportive school system. With regard to school board leadership, I am just putting here on this slide for you the five different areas that MSBA has set our standards for school board leadership. So conduct and ethics, vision, structure, accountability and advocacy and communication. And as I said, this, this presentation really is, it's just a short report to try to give you a little bit of background, help you understand what, what has come to the surface this past year. But in the future sessions and conversations with the board, we'll dive into this a little bit more deeply. And perhaps what some of the, the school board might do with regard to their standards, these five you see here. And the work that is a priority for us with safe and supportive schools moving forward. So that's what I have for you tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchler. Any questions or comments? I know there are a lot. Please, Director Sorum.
I'll just want to thank Dr. Mitchler because when, since she came on, we've had to deal with all kinds of things, cultural proficiency, this and some of the other things that, and along with the MSBA meetings. It seems like you've been here two to three years, but I realize it's only been the one. But thank you so much for working with, especially OEE and some of the other departments and elementary schools and the principals that have have been, had such a successful year in spite of all the problems that we have. So thanks a lot for all of your good work.
Thank you for that, Director Sorum. And you're right, you know, there's been a lot that's happened this past year. And I think that's why more than ever it is the time for us to be focusing on what we can do to try to support our students and our families. So thank you for that.
Thoughts, comments? Director Olson.
Yes, and I'm sure that we will be talking about things that are going on right now in the community. There's a lot of talk about what a safe and supportive school looks like. So I'm expecting that we will need to start addressing what is happening in Minneapolis. After the George Floyd tragedy and that, I'm sure that it's going to come to us as well under safe and supportive schools. And having racially conscious mental health services and, and as well as safety coaches. And so anyway, I am really glad that we have this going on, this safe and supportive schools model. Because I feel that we're ready to start taking on the hard questions.
Director Starks.
So my question was related to how much of this work is still possible to address while distance learning is happening or what pivots are you maybe having to make? You know, and then if we're in person in the fall or if we're in a hybrid in the fall, how is safe and supportive schools being used as a lens for those decisions as well?
Yeah, thanks, Director Starks. That's a great question. So first, you know, with thinking through a different model for facilitating learning, I think all three are really important of those key areas that I mentioned. So if you think about engagement and just how important it is to think about how engagement might look different within a different type of a model. You know, one way that we've seen that play out is where we've seen students perhaps disengaged in distance learning. We've reached out, you know, the last couple of months with support. And I think that's just such a great shift for us to make to instead of responding to a student who seems disengaged with maybe thinking through some sort of behavior or how we might manage behavior. And instead thinking about how we can support that student. So there's some really great takeaways, I think, that we're learning through doing, doing things a little bit differently, right? The second key component I mentioned is the tailored instruction piece. And so trying to really personalize for students, what is it they need? What is it they're interested in? And then how can we tie their instruction to that? It's really important in face-to-face instruction, but I think it's probably even more important when you're doing a, a distance model because you need to, you need to be fostering that engagement. because you need to you need to be fostering that engagement probably more than ever. So thank you for that.
Yeah. Other comments, questions? Director Bennett.
Okay, so first of all, Dr. Mitchler, thank you so much for this work. This is important work, and I think you're doing a great job of jumping into it, especially in your first year here. You know, Bloomington has done a lot of really good things when it comes to Safe and Supportive Schools in the past couple of years, mostly with keeping our kids physically safe with the referendum and that we were able to upgrade our school securities and making sure that our most cherished possessions are safe. And I think we've done a lot of good work on policy to make them more inclusive and more equitable and using, you know, gender neutral pronouns and having a student, you know, or student policy, student rights policy, and just more inclusive language for protected classes like, you know, immigration status or those sort of things. So I'm wondering now, we've gotten that part done. Now we got to jump into the emotional and social emotional safety, and that's in a whole other ball of wax. And it's going to be quite difficult because for emotional, social emotional health, that requires employees. And I know Minnesota as as a whole, we're like, what, 49th in the in the country when it comes to ratio of counselors? And I don't know how we are with social workers and school psychologists, but do you think that we're approaching that time where we're going to want to make an investment in the emotional, social emotional employees so that we can meet the increasing needs of our students?
Yeah, it's a really good point that you bring up, Director Bennett, about how interconnected all of this is, right? So in order for us to do good work for students, we have to make sure we have the right resources in place. And part of that, Castle, which does some work with social emotional learning nationally, has recently come out with some some research to suggest that one of the best places to start for school districts is with the adults and working with social emotional development and learning with adults. And so we've been fortunate enough to be awarded a grant that we'll be starting to work with in the fall, where we'll be able to provide some professional development opportunities for staff and start to really take stock of what resources we have in place and then think through what what we may be need to continue to build. So I think you bring up a good point that that's something to consider.
Director Bibi.
Yeah, I was wondering, you know, given the fact that, excuse me, our enrollment has gone down and how that affects our budget. And and these are really good goals to have. But how can we reach that? Because it will take bodies, it will take staff, it will take those that when you talk about tiers of support, we're going to need people in those places to bring support. So, you know, part of me is grateful to see that because I would have liked some things available for my students, my my sons. And we begged for it and it wasn't available, but it can be now. But I guess I'm just a realist in the finances we have to work with and also knowing that we're going to need to make cuts for the the coming year in our budget. I was encouraged that you said you found a grant to help with this. But I'm wondering how many more grants could we find to keep this as a possibility?
Yeah, that's a good question. And the grant that we've been awarded is really just for professional development. So we have some amazing staff, as you, many of you know. And I think was mentioned earlier, Rod was talking about the food staff, food staff these last couple of months. The same thing with our staff who are supporting students and families around social emotional needs. Fantastic work that's happening. But we realized too that, you know, we're all on a journey and I think we can continue to grow. And so, yeah, thinking through and taking stock of our resources, but also recognizing that our resources are somewhat limited is going to be an important thing to consider. I think there are some other important things we can do. You know, Director Bennett, you had mentioned policy, right? I think that can be one of the things that we come back to. And I'm looking, I'm looking forward to our next session together and talking through what some of our our next steps might be as a group to start thinking through these priorities and what we might do moving forward.
Any other questions? Director Steiger.
Yes, you talked about professional development for this fall. But I'm wondering, with all of the things that happened with COVID-19, and we had professional development planned that the board had some of it. But I know we had some plan with staff and but I also know they had to switch to do a lot more professional development on distance learning. So was the other professional development put on hold? Or did that still happen this spring online also? Or where did where did some of that happen, not happen?
Sure, so I can talk a little bit to the equity plan specifically. We, as you know, have our new three-year equity plan that we're going to be working towards. And so we have been continuing that professional development, and it's scheduled to continue as we had planned it to. You know, and there's many other, I think, professional development opportunities that have continued as scheduled. And in addition, there's been a lot of new professional development opportunities that have surfaced. I think the current working environment has maybe made it easier in some ways for staff to take part in some professional development opportunities. And so we we have been able to move forward with most of our most of our plans.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Well, I would say that I have taken so many notes that I don't even know where to start. I just think there's such an important job that you're in such an important initiative that you're putting in front of us, especially considering the the events of the past three months now since this COVID-19 started. I mean, those are, we have many layers and layers of things that had been happening. But now that we have been going through this, now we can, we can actually see them clearly. We can actually touch them. And this has increased the the level of distress that many of the students and school personnel may have had, may have experienced in the past. And so, you know, coming back to schools and we're talking, and I know we have, we have concerns that are related to budget and finances and how are we going to develop this kind of plan? But there was one, one star that Dr. Mitchler brought to us, and it's empathy. And I think as as we start this type of program, you know, looking at ourselves and who we are as leaders in the district, we start with ourselves, you know, showing empathy, showing, putting ourselves in other people's shoes, what they have been going through, what our students went through, what our teachers went through. And we don't know what is going to happen in the fall. And so there is a whole, a lot of different things that are that are playing a big role into what our our people are going to be feeling when they start again in the fall. So how do we, how do we work together and how we guarantee that we are being supportive of everyone when they return? So how much do our kids need? How much do our employees need? How much can they actually take in? Are we going to, or how we're going to level and balance things as we continue to work towards academic excellence, but also social emotional needs? And so if we start with us, I think we have a good start. If we start with empathy and showing it from the from the very top, you know, the school board, the superintendent, members of our cabinet, then we have a good, a good beginning. And when it, you know, when it comes to to resources, we have the Office of Educational Equity. I see that office as a huge resource that we already have. And I see them also as, you know, people that have this very important role in helping our most vulnerable students in the district. And so let's use those resources. I'd be interested, and you know, when you talk about it, because we don't have much time to talk about this or we have, we have to move. When you talk about leadership of the of the board, what what exactly do you think you're going to be needing from us in the coming sessions with you?
Yeah, that's a great question, Chair Corman. So when I mentioned those five standards for school board leadership, there's a couple that stand out to me. And I'd like to talk a little bit more about them in the next session. But accountability being one of the keys, you know, Superintendent Fujitaki mentioned some of the metrics that we could consider thinking about. So attendance, you know, being one of them. How are we doing measuring ourselves and then holding ourselves accountable to those to those metrics? I think another one you had just mentioned empathy, but when you think about communication or engagement with community and how do we work really hard to maintain our engagement with community and really know what it is they want and need? So I think there's some key things we can pull that pull out of those standards or that connect well to those standards and and talk through for moving forward.
Thank you. So and I really hope that when we come back with you to have those conversations that we have the right amount of time that we're going to need to have deep discussions so that we don't have to feel in a position, oh, we have to hurry up.
Yes, definitely. Thank you.
Yeah, so definitely a very important conversation. I think it's very important for all of us board members to really go deep into those and find different ways that we can support our students and school community or families. Thank you. Okay, I guess there's nothing else. We're going to move into our member reports. Someone like to start? Director Bennett.
Yes, so usually, it's like 10 years when we were talking about all the fun graduation activities we got to go to. And well, that's not happening really this year, but I did have some fun graduation activities I got to go to. This last weekend, this last Saturday, the Office of Educational Equity had their kind of like drive-through graduation for their leadership team where where they did a no-contact celebration of kids coming by in their cars and everyone waving and making noise. And it was a lot of fun. And I want to thank, you know, Director Sorm for informing us that it was happening. Because I didn't even know it was happening. So it was a great little little thing to be part of. And then also in 917, I went to a graduation last week, kind of similar type thing, the drive-through graduation for the decals program. And also on a bit of sad news, I know Chair Corman started the meeting talking about the tragic passing of the chair of St. Paul. Well, on that same day, also learned that the art chair of 917, Jill Lewis, also lost her life after her battle of cancer. And she was probably one of the strongest people I've met. So if anyone could have beat it, I was thinking it was going to be her. But she held on for a long time and she was still active with the board. And so my heart goes out to her, her family for that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Director Bennett. Director Steiger.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, you know, I've really been impressed with the staff and all the creative ways they've come up with to have some form of goodbye with their students and still maintain social distancing. So I was able to attend one at Olson Middle School, one in Indian Mountains, and one at Ridgeview Elementary. And then I also wanted to tell everyone of you haven't had a chance to drive by Kennedy, please drive by and see how the Kennedy staff has put all of their pictures on the fence too. And it's really great. I happened to stop by to get pictures and they were still there putting the last ones on. So I just wanted to say, you know, there's a lot of things that maybe I've seen good things happen too because of this, because people had to be more creative. So I just want to thank everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Olson.
Yes, I also wanted to mention that they put those same, they did the same thing on the Jefferson fence. They had taken them down briefly and put them back up. So those are up as well. And I read on that, that's, that was really special to see, to drive by. So I hope people drive by the fences and see that. I went to, I watched the school buses take off. They did a day where they drove their last afternoon rope so that kids could wave or, you know, say hi to them or say goodbye to them because a lot of bus drivers develop close relationships with those students as well, and they're an important part of their school day. I also wanted to mention that I had attended the Education Minnesota Candidate Screening for ST50 along with Nellie, and that all candidates in ST50 had a unanimous endorsement. That would be Senator Melissa Wicklund, Representative Michael Howard, and Representative Andrew Carlson, as all three support investments in public education. And I took a lot of notes on what they said, but just to, just to summarize, Andrew Carlson mentioned that we need to fund our values, funding our schools is funding our values. And Michael Howard said that, you know, the $4.5 billion question is, do we bail out corporations to, which would be borrowing money from our schools? And that we need to invest in our schools. And Senator Wicklund said that, you know, that sometimes the same people who criticize the outcomes of our schools are also not putting forward the bills. So she would like to, she gets frustrated with that. And they would like to also point out that addressing needs outside of the school helps everyone in education as well. And so speaking of speaking of helping with needs outside of school, I know a lot of people are gathering food and groceries for Minneapolis and through suburbs and solidarity, which happens to be students from Kennedy High School. I helped them. They were, they were all organizing it and doing it, but they were putting out a request for help to drive in supplies to Minneapolis. And so I did that. But the reason I want to bring it up here is that the the community was so generous that they ended up with so much food that they wanted to reach out to the Bloomington community in need as well. And so from 10 to 1, seven days a week, people who need groceries and supplies, they have diapers and other supplies, are able to go to, they have it happen to be taking place at Atonement. And like I said, I know there's other places that are helping out as well. But this is where I happened to volunteer. And so at Atonement on Old Chakapie, they are allowing families to come in and one bag per person in the family. So if you have five people in your family, you can fill up five bags. And I'll be doing that from 10 to 1, seven days a week, for as long as they have food coming in. And it looks like they have a lot of food and as well as continuing to run supplies to Minneapolis. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Other reports? No? Well, I also had the opportunity to visit the wall at Kennedy High School. But that was really, really nice to see. And then observed, had the opportunity to observe the system of the drop drop-off and the pickup, the pickup of things that kids have left in schools and and drop-off of devices and textbooks. And I was just really impressed with with how safe everybody was, how organized it was. And it was, it was really well done, so I truly appreciate that. Then I also had, was able to walk to Hillcrest Community, which is so close, of course, to me, and see the buses coming back from the parade that they did on the last day of school. It was really nice to see all the the line of buses as they left right at the end of the day. So thank you to our bus drivers for for the service that they provided during the school year. And also, just like Director Bennett, I attended the Office of Educational Equity, their leadership, Leadership Academy graduation. So that was really, really nice to be there to see the big smiles and the excitement of our students that were being celebrated for for their accomplishment. Yeah, I think that's all I have for now. Okay, so we moved into Superintendent's report. Superintendent Fujitaki.
Thank you, Chair Corman. I'll, in the interest of time, I'll review my report to just essential board actions. Administration requests a motion to establish a study session of the school board on Monday, June 15 at 6:00 p.m. Agenda topics include parent and student staff survey results, Safe and Supportive Schools, and board and superintendent goals with 2021. We have a motion, please.
Second, Steiger.
Okay, very good. Any additional comments on that? No? Okay, so we're ready to vote. All those in favor? All those in favor, please say aye. I'll have to do the roll call. So here's my list. Director Bibi.
Aye.
Director Bennett.
Aye.
Director Olson.
Aye.
Sorum.
Aye.
Starks.
Aye.
Steiger.
Aye.
Corman, aye. This motion passes.
Thank you, Chair Corman. Thank you, board. Administration requests another motion to establish a study session of the school board on Monday, June 22, upon conclusion of the regular meeting that begins at 7:00 p.m. The agenda topic will be safe and supportive schools. We have a motion, please.
Come on, second. Sorum.
Okay, any additional comments? Now we're moving to vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Bibi.
Aye.
Bennett.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Sorum.
Aye.
Starks.
Aye.
Steiger.
Aye.
Corman, aye. This passes.
My last thing is, I need another motion to cancel the school board meeting scheduled for July 13 and July 27. The consultation with the chair and the vice chair, usually we cancel July meetings, and this is according to that. So we have a motion to cancel the July meetings.
So move. Sorum.
Second, Steiger.
Okay, very good. Any additional comments? None. We're moving to both. All those in favor, please say aye. Bibi.
Aye.
Bennett.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Sorum.
Aye.
Starks.
Aye.
Steiger.
Aye.
Corman, aye. Okay.
My report, Chair Corman.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other business?
Chair Corman?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, I wasn't sure if last week you passed the resolution for the closed meeting for negotiation or not. But if you haven't, you should do that now.
You mean for tonight?
For tonight.
Yeah, I understand that we did pass a motion.
Okay.
So upon conclusion of this meeting, we're going to go to the next meeting for negotiations, a closed meeting. Close session. Okay, I don't think we have any others. Thank you. Thank you, David, for reminding us. So would somebody like to move adjournment at the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, very good. All those in favor of adjourned in the meeting, please say aye. Director Bibi.
Aye.
Director Bennett.
Aye.
Director Olson.
Aye.
Director Sorum.
Aye.
Director Starks.
Aye.
Director Steiger.
Aye.
And Corman, aye. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you. See you in a bit.
So we're going to take, what, a five-minute break and then meet back again?
Take a couple minutes.
Run the bathroom quick.